Our divisions to the flag, now the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're trying out a new sound system tonight, so if you're too loud or not loud enough, let us know in the newsroom if this is your mic, so tell us what you hear. Evernote Dave? There is a new part now.
The school board will continue to close session tonight to consider employment evaluation, compensation, or performance evaluation data on any public employee who is the governmental body whose jurisdiction exercises responsibility under Wisconsin statutes 19.8, 5, Grand One Forensic. FMLA requests high school special education teacher, girls and boys, high school basketball coaches, high school volleyball JV coach, and assistant high school football coach.
And under new business item D, discussion, action, Fund 46 and Fund 47. Forty-seven is a type which need Fund 73 transfers.
Okay, we have a presentation then by our upper tech tonight. Would you like to introduce that?
Yeah, Clint Sealy from Brails here. He's been with us every step away on his project since the CPAC started. It was October of 2018. And since the referendum passed in November 2017.
When's your first spell?
2017-18 school year, correct. And since the referendum passed in November, we've met every other Thursday. And been developing a plan with different subcommittees and teacher groups and organizations within the system. And Andre from Irons here as well, as our general contractor.
I told you we'll get up and get it set up and take it right.
All right, well, thanks everyone for being here. I can yell, try yelling.
Just put it around here, yeah.
Who hasn't a shot here? Well, it's great to be here today for tonight. For those of you that were on the CPAC, I recognize a few faces. Very excited to be back. As Kyle said, we've made a lot of great, I think, really, really positive development since the referendum passed. We'll get to the schedule in the end. I'm going to kind of just kind of take you through some updates of where we are. And then you'll be just see a little bit of some of the exterior and then also the interior development that we're really excited about. So again, I apologize if this is a little small for those of you in the back, but I'll try to zoom in a little bit, so it's a little better to see. So this is our overall site plan. Again, Highway 57 runs along here. And as we indicated and communicated throughout the referendum process, the plan is to keep the 60s high school middle school building, keep the 91 gym addition that was put on here. And then we're taking down the three-story building and the tech ed building behind that as part of the project. So in order to do that, we obviously need to build our addition first. So the outline here in yellow that you see is the proposed addition. And the proposed addition is organized and arranged such that we can keep those two buildings that we're going to tear down in function while we're building the addition. And then during the summer of 2021, the school will move into the new addition. And then during that summer, the existing building that will come down along with some of the site work that will occur. So the fall of 2021 is when students will kind of occupy the new section of the building. Overall, the site development, again, I mean, we are very much still in kind of the development phase. The drawings themselves are scheduled to be completed in December. And then we'll bid the documents out to contractors at that time. So again, things are in a bit of flux, but kind of where we sit today, the south parking lot down here, that is anticipated to be the parent drop-off loop. So again, with the addition being here, our new main entry is at this location of the building. So parents will drop off students along this section here. Off of 57, this is intended to be more staff and specifically the bus drop-off area. So the buses will come in one side, loop through, and then back out. And then students will filter into the building on this side of the building. There's a loop that loops you around the building. So again, we'll get into kind of the details of where everything's located within the building. But the loop kind of loops you back into what's the service area for receiving and maintenance as well as the tech ed areas. And then it provides kind of a service access drive around the building to the existing playground on the north side of the building. This blue area back here, again, this is kind of one of those things that's still under development, but because, again, of the development regulations, the VNR requirements for the site, we are going to require to have a stormwater management, I'll say, structure or facility on site. And the way that this is looking right now is that that will need to be designed as a wet pond. Again, that's kind of all dictated based on how much hard surface is on the site. So that includes parking lot and building. The general premise of that is you want the stormwater runoff comes to this location, is held, and then slowly released. So again, kind of the philosophy behind it is we're letting the water off at a rate that's dictated by the VNR. We've had discussions about the safety factor of this pond. Again, we don't want, obviously don't want any students to get hurt or to wander in there. There's a couple of things that we'll keep in mind as we move through the process. The first one is that the pond is designed with a safety shelf inherent into it. What that means is that where the water level is kind of designed to be, there's about 10 feet. The first 10 feet of water is only about a foot deep at any given time. And then it gets deeper in the middle. I think the deepest point is only six or seven feet in the middle. The second question or the second thing that we've been discussing is whether or not we fence around that stormwater pond. And the general consensus that we have in a lot of school districts is we ask you to contact your insurance and see what they believe and think in terms of what the regulations are. What we've heard from a lot of school districts is, and even just talking to some safety professionals, is fencing it doesn't necessarily make it safer because kids are inclined to climb over fences. And then should something happen, then the emergency, you also have to get over and maneuver a fence as well. So right now, the philosophy that we're taking is we're going to kind of fence along the front of it. There is a fence currently kind of that runs along the property line here. So we're going to extend that to again, kind of deter people from getting out. The thought, oops.
Lost there, it's gone.
The thought is then that we will deter people, but then again, that safety factor, if somebody does need to... So again, we're going to fence kind of along here to deter. Also, interestingly enough, we did a very similar project recently in another K-12 facility. Similar, sort of similar configuration of addition onto existing with a stormwater pond beyond it. Specifically asked that client if they've had any issues at all. Again, it was a very similar discussion we had with them, and they've been very happy, and it has not been an issue with them at all. So feeling pretty good about that. But again, we'll have ongoing discussions with the team as we move through the process. So moving inside the building. A unique challenge to this particular project is, as you've walked through the building, and I think as we explained, is one of the challenges of the existing facility, is there's just a lot of different levels. We're at the level right now, there's a slight ramp back up, you know, the tech ed wing's at different levels. So the other consideration is that when buildings are being built, so let's take the high school as an example. If you're in the classroom wing where the science classrooms are, and then the floor above that, that's a very shallow structural floor. And as we consider how the HVAC system and stuff works into there, while logically it makes sense to kind of align to that datum line, it doesn't really work in terms of how our structure and HVAC and ductwork and piping and everything needs to run. So after a lot of analysis, we determined that the low level of the addition is going to align with the level of the current cafeteria and kitchen area. So when you're in that kitchen cafeteria area, you'll come out. And that also works really well with the existing grade as well. Because if you're standing in this back parking lot, that's kind of the grade that it matches up to. And there's actually steps that take you up to that science classroom corridor. And then if you kind of stand there and look out towards the east, towards the woods, the grade kind of falls off in that condition as well. Now, it does kind of raise back up as we get back up to the 91 gym. But again, this whole exercise is kind of balancing, balancing the site, balancing how this building is overall. So again, this level lines up to this. I'm just going to jump us, just jump us up to the next floor level in terms of how we relate to the existing building. So again, now we're looking at what we would consider kind of the first floor of the high school middle school, and then the first floor of the 91 addition. So if you're coming down this corridor, again, this is that science wing you're coming down, there'll be a set of stairs that they'll come down to get to this level. And then likewise, elementary students, as they're going to filter through, the elementary students are going to go to that cafeteria level directly through. So again, organizationally, the building is set up that this is the front entry, the main office, with a secure entry vestibule. I'm going to zoom in just because it's a little fuzzy in terms of how it looks. If you can read the labels a little better. So this is our main office. This is going to be a combined elementary through high school office in this location. This has really kind of become a nice element. Like I said, we're going to have students being dropped off and the buses up here. There's going to be parents with students down this southern part coming in. So this main kind of commons that cuts through the building is a really important element of the building as we connect the new to the existing. Within this zone then is a multipurpose room. Again, one of the goals for this project is to replicate a room similar to this, so that we have a room that can be used during the day for students or at night for presentations such as this. One thing that we did try to accomplish here though is that this room is also adjacent to the elementary library. And we're going to have some doors that are going to open up, so these two spaces could kind of share and open up and become one large space. Similarly, the idea, you'll see an interior view, that there'll be doors along this wall so that the multipurpose space can kind of open up to the commons area. So there's a lot of flexibility in use. Again, extending down the science corridor, this is kind of a multi-use corridor, both for elementary and for middle high school. There's art classrooms here, so we have elementary and middle high school. There's the steam fab lab, the graphics lab, hay, a nice sized greenhouse, and then our tech ed shafts up here. And then moving to the north, this is, this set of doors kind of represents where the elementary starts. So through these doors, we come down a corridor. To the right, there's first grade classrooms. To the left, there's some life skills, a staff workroom, a Title I room. And then around the corner is our early childhood kindergarten 4K classrooms. So they're kind of in a really nice segregated park, they're closest to the playgrounds. And then one of the ideas for this courtyard-shaped space is potentially to, in the future, maybe even give them their own playground, their own size playground area. Again, from a levels perspective, we do need to kind of go back up to the level of the 91 addition, which is again, the gymnasium and the choir and band. Because choir and band, you can see the outline here of what we're tearing down for the 46 tech ed addition. There's offices and practice rooms and the little bar that connects. So we are including office and practice areas for the music within this little section of the addition up to the 91. And then our second floor. So again, you can kind of see the dashed lines there of the three-story building, the three-story building 57, 46 tech ed. So this corridor of the existing building is primarily going to be middle school. So currently, these pinkish-purpleish rooms here are kindergarten, early childhood, and 4K rooms. So those will be converted to sixth and seventh grade rooms, and then eighth grade, as well as some additional special ed and a flexible room on our continual corridor here. One of the things we discovered during design was that there were really no bathrooms down this corridor for middle school. So we did have to carve some bathrooms in at that location to make sure that they're able to accommodate the students. But again, thank you, thanks for the, or due to the wonderful generous donations by Trumtronics. We're able to do the science classrooms up on the second floor. So again, the idea is this continues through here from the existing. So there's no level change here, this comes straight through. We have the middle school, and then kind of more of a chem lab, and more of a physics lab along here, special ed. You'll see this when we get to the interior, this is a stair going back down. It's kind of a unique stair. Part of this process in working with the staff is we took a number of tours, and we saw this stair here kind of represents what we call a learning stair. And it's going to be kind of a really interesting and unique function within the building. Again, similarly to the floor below, this set of doors kind of takes us back into the elementary world. So we have second, third, fourth, and fifth grade up on the second floor. There's a second set of stairs over here, computer labs, and a staff workroom up here. Before I jump to kind of some of the fun stuff on the interior and exterior of the building, I just want to kind of show a little bit of our inspiration. Again, I think we're really fortunate to kind of stumble, I shouldn't, I don't know if stumbles is the right word, but you know, within design, within real estate, the common double system, three most important things in real estate are location, location, location. And the three most important things in design are composition, composition, and composition. And I don't think you have good composition if you don't have a good theme, if you don't have a good story to tell, if you don't have a good basis for what you're trying to identify with. And so we, it's the Pier Head, right? Is that the right? Pier Head, yeah. So we kind of found some of this great imagery from the Pier Head, which we thought, again, I mentioned earlier, we talked about the floor plan, and we have that common space or that circulation space that's really important for us. And when I saw, when we saw this imagery, we just thought somehow we had to try to make this, this concept or this framing element sort of from the Pier Head sort of fit within there. We just felt that it just, it had a really great opportunity, again, to kind of inform, become the theme for the overall project. This idea of things passing through. The other thing, we love the detailing, the color of this was really great. Again, here, you know, the school colors, obviously here, Sebastian's the blue, red, and some of the rusting color just has kind of a nice natural appeal to it and aesthetic. But more importantly, we just love, again, the lighthouse and the color for that, and some way that we can bring that element into the building without being literal, right? We don't want to make the school maybe literally look like a lighthouse. But we just love the composition and the colors that this offered. And again, that's kind of a material palette for the overall structure. So with that... Let's see. It's not showing up. So there's one more, let me just try to go back to that. It's not showing up for me. Ah, there we go, all right. So this is a bird's eye view that, looking at the overall facility, again, kind of from the east, from the woods side. Again, this is the middle school, high school, the 91 gym, Highway 57 is up along here. So we thought this is kind of a nice bird's eye view to kind of just show you thematically how the public building looks and fits in. Again, this is kind of that stormwater pond that we described earlier. You can see here the greenhouse that we're starting to design and show on the space, but again, kind of a cool view. This is, again, that kindergarten, four-year-old kindergarten space with, again, some potential that this courtyard space could be utilized for playground spaces, you know, possibly in the future. So here's our new main entry. This is the new front of the building or kind of the south side. Again, this is that parent drop-off loop. This is, this represents the existing building. Again, this would be kind of a window into the science room and the second floor classrooms. So again, kind of the, from a material palette, or just for being pretty simple, we'd like to try to kind of match the brick as best we can throughout the facility with the new addition. This is the start to imply kind of that framing from the Pier Head that we see. So that element runs all the way through the building. It also becomes the support for a canopy element that will reach out. Again, the introduction of that red, which we're suggesting here is kind of a metal panel material, that kind of splash of red. Again, the intent is not to use it a lot, but to kind of just use it in key spots where we want to bring focal points to the overall building. And then this view here is standing just inside the new front door. So again, I described that learning stair earlier, this sophisticated-looking gentleman here. This would be, again, that stair taking you up to where the second floor science classrooms would be. And then again, the learning stair here, the intent for that is it could be something of a formal presentation where you have a speaker up here. But more often than not, it's just kind of intended to be an informal space for students to sit, work in groups, work by themselves, read a book, wait for somebody during a board meeting, how they're going to see fit to use it. The space beyond here, again, is that multipurpose room. So you can see the doors, kind of big garage doors that basically will open up and either allow this to be closed off or opened up to that corridor space. And again, kind of a splash of red within the building here.
Clint, can you tell what's underneath the stairs? How are you utilizing the space?
Table storage.
Yeah. But that, and it's document storage. So it's not just a stairwell, but underneath it, it's going to be storage for the multipurpose room and for a document storage for the office, the K-12 office, which is across the hallway to the south there.
Yep.
So it's multipurpose, it's wider. So I think by the way, it's a wide stairwell, but it's multipurpose for that reason.
And actually, behind that stair also is what we're, an area we're calling a career corner. So that was something we really wanted to try to integrate in with, working with the guidance teachers, was to give a spot for them to display information, pamphlets. The thought is we have some type of monitor board so they can have things scrolling on it. So then again, that's a bit of a work in progress, but that's another thing under the stair. But Rock was so excited to get table storage, so that's why I mentioned the storage. So again, you can see that framing element coming all the way through this common space. Up above, again, because we're kind of internal to the building, we would like to integrate a skylight-type space, you can kind of start to see this. On the second floor, again, there's some gathering space above there, kind of informal seating, gathering, collaboration-type space. And then this is that view into the, what will be basically this room in the new building. Again, a multipurpose room, flexible, hopefully that'll change hourly as staff and student schemes change. You can see here, this is the couple steps up then back into the existing high school. And then right behind me would be the door that you would, again, just at grade or at level would walk into to go into the cafeteria. Any questions about that?
So there's no elevator in this?
There's, there is a couple elevators, yes.
There is an elevator.
Yes.
I was wondering how, you know, you'd be a handicapped student from the first and second floor.
So there will be two elevators. We're, just due to the location and the fact that we're changing the front of the building here. And because we're kind of locking off the third floor, so to speak, we're more or less going to abandon the existing elevator. So there will be a new elevator located just inside the existing building here. It's right where the stairwell exists at the end of the hallway there. And that will get you to the low level, the cafeteria level. It'll get you to the level the science classrooms are at, and it will get us to the gym, and it will also get us to the second floor level. The second elevator is on this side, the music side, to get us up to the 91 building. Again, we messed around with different solutions for ramps, you know, all kinds of different solutions, and we really couldn't get past the need for another elevator at this location. So this one will take you from the, again, the floor of the first floor of the main building up to the floor level of the music classroom.
So if you're entering to get to the gym, are you entering the old entrance or the new?
I would say, I would say you, if you're a handicapped person, you would want to enter at the new location, but I...
I mean, the regular people that come are going to come in the regular entrance?
They're going to come in both, just like they come in the back.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Okay, yeah, they'll come in both ways.
You could go in both together. Right, you could go in either or, and get the other.
I was just wondering where there's an entrance when you come to an athletic event.
Most likely, we think down at the bottom is where people...
Yeah, but yes, a person in a wheelchair that came in, this set of doors would come down this hallway, from the elevator, come up to the chair. Definitely an interesting puzzle to work through, but again, I think the end product's going to be really interesting, unique, and exciting.
Clint, can you talk about the second floor? Where there isn't a second floor in the new addition, it's being built so it can support a second floor in the future?
Yeah. So this is our upper floor level, this is our second floor level, again, the addition to the existing building. So I mentioned when I was down below, this is the greenhouse, and then this is the tech ed labs. The tech ed labs want a little more headroom space, so this space, you know, you can see a line here, this will be a taller space. This will be, the floor here will actually kind of be built and designed as a floor, and then we'll put a roof on top of it. So the thought or idea is that in the future, you can come through these spaces, there would be a corridor along here, likely have a stair at that time. Then you could do additional classrooms above this section, and then additional classrooms above this section up here. Similarly, again, you could kind of come through this part of the building and enter into that as a second floor.
And then could you enlarge the two second grade or third grade classrooms or fourth or fifth, whatever you have there, so that folks can see? We've had every grade level in on the meetings, and all the classrooms, grades one through five, will be identical, there'll be two sections for each with a, you see, a room called SGI, that's a small group instruction room that will be shared. Third grade will share the one between their rooms, and second grade will share the one between theirs. And the teachers have had the opportunity to talk about what they want carpeting on the whole floor, part of the flooring, cabinetry where that's going to go. But all the rooms will be identical, first through fifth grade, and early childhood, 4K and kindergarten. Those rooms will match up the same on the first floor. And the small group instruction will be accessible from the hallway. So if a speech pathologist or English language learner teacher or an A comes working with someone, they can use them from the hallway side too. So it's not included in the room only where it's exclusive to that grade level. Anything else to talk about the cubby zone?
Sure. So the idea is we have kind of cubby banks here. So again, the theory could be that the kids would come up this set of stairs here. They would take their clothes and boots off within the cubby area. But cubby areas will have, it's called a walk-off carpet, so it's really a carpet which will also... so it's really a carpet which we'll also have in the vestibules within the building, so it's kinda designed to handle the gunk off of shoes, so that will be within this area. So again, they'll come up, they'll take their stuff off, they can use the restrooms, get a drink, and then they're ready to go into their classrooms and learn. One of the other strategies, and again, something we saw in the tour, is this hallway's a little bit wider. Again, in addition to having the small group instruction for testing and pull-ups and things, we know there might be times when students, you know, just need a little bit different settings, so by having a little bit wider corridor, we're hopeful that we can get some furniture, some flexible furniture out within that as well, so that students are able to utilize that space as well outside of the classroom.
Can I ask a question, what size are the rooms?
They are 900 square feet.
Which is?
Thirty by thirty, roughly.
Is there water in them?
Yes, yeah, each room has a sink within it, and then the sink also has a drinking fountain on it.
You have another question?
Absolutely.
At the committee, we had talked about saving the entry, the concrete entry, then, did we do that?
We are working on some solutions to do that. If we don't, if for whatever reason we're not, we're also trying to think through maybe graphically or symbolically in some other way that we can show or demonstrate that. One of the thoughts or ideas that were bouncing around or thinking through, sorry, can't hear, sir. One of the thoughts or ideas that we had was, let's see what's the best, you're gonna show us. Again, this is kinda standing at the front door, again, like I mentioned, that cafeteria door. The thought is maybe to try to replicate something at that location.
Replicate, you don't think you'll be able to save the original?
We're not sure yet.
Oh, okay.
You know, as we tear it down, we don't always know if we find or how it's gonna-
Correct.
Would be able to-
We did kinda tell people we would do that.
We, yeah, we're doing our best.
Just remind you.
Yes.
I know you can't anticipate technology 20 years out, but if you're gonna have a way to retrofit fifth classrooms for future technology, is there any way to kinda think ahead and do that?
Sure.
With the wiring?
Well, the first thing, like I mentioned, again, schools specifically built in kinda the 60s, 70s and 80s had very low profiles, and then, which is why they had those boxes on the outside walls, which are very loud and noisy and no one likes. So we do have a lot of ceiling heights, so you know, technology, whether it's wired or from those in the future, probably all gonna be wireless, right? There's flexibility, my point is just, there should be a lot of flexibility to run something in the future, not knowing exactly what it is. Additionally, one of the things that we're doing within the building, and Kyle kinda, you know, when we were in this location, from a durability perspective, the walls and the corridors will be a CMU block wall, so again, stands up to the wear and tear every day. But one of the walls between the rooms will be a drywall, you know, steel stud drywall type wall rather than a block wall. Again, for flexibility in the future that we can run technology down the walls, for flexibility if they ever wanna change or reconfigure rooms, it'd be a lot easier and simpler. We use abuse and mold and mildew resistant drywall, and so, again, we hopefully are combating any concerns with that.
Will those walls then be soundproofing?
Yep, yep, they'll all have, we-
Like double?
Double. So the walls, the walls, a lot of times when you have issues with walls, it's a couple things. A lot of times the walls only go up to the ceiling or a little bit above the ceiling. These will all go all the way up to the roof or the floor below. They'll be filled solid with, it's called a sound attenuation mat insulation, so it's a very thick wool material to help suck up the sound. And then we're also working on some additional strategies for how that drywall is attached to the steel studs to help avoid the transfer of sound through them. But yeah, we've done this in a lot of schools and had very positive success with the sound characteristics.
Thank you.
Will there be any gender neutral bathrooms or family-style restrooms?
Yep, we have quite a few of them located throughout. That's actually one change out here that we haven't incorporated yet is on the, within the addition, on the second floor, there's a gender neutral toilet up in this location near the staff, staff workroom. And then these toilets down here right now, it's shown as two toilets, but we discussed those being as three gender neutral toilets. There's also another single occupant toilet on that location. And then on the first floor, we also have several locations of single occupant or gender neutral toilets as well.
Speaking of toilets, do the teachers have some that are private?
Yeah, there's a staff-
I think it's a staff room.
Yeah.
Well, tell me about it, is it included in the room or is it just for staff and it's a regular bathroom or?
Well, it's, it's, those rooms are kinda sprinkled again throughout, the staff toilets are sprinkled throughout, so again, whether they're used by staff or potentially as a gender neutral bathroom.
And there's, in the new K-12 office, there's this faculty bathroom too.
There's two, actually, two.
Yeah.
Okay, but I'm asking about, you have a staff room up there for them to eat lunch, have a meeting, whatever, is there a bathroom there?
There is not one in there. Every single school we go into, they don't wanna open a door into a staff room and be using the toilets, so it's just outside the room.
Outside, but close.
Yes.
Okay, yes. You guys might have to get some board, but it really is.
I hope that anybody said it wasn't important, by the way. Here's an lunch appointment discussion.
Howdy.
Also, just one other thing I did mention is all the kindergarten, 4K and early childhood also have their own toilet associated off of each of the rooms.
That's really nice.
Kinda similar to what we have in a few of the rooms here.
Can you give your three D's and capital P's looking down?
Yeah, I was just trying to look that up, actually. So we utilize a program called Revit for all of our building drawings, so our industry's changed quite a bit, and I'm sure some of your high school kids are starting to, hopefully are starting to utilize this versus the more traditional 2D type of things. But again, all of the imagery you're seeing here, all those 3D images are actually the model in the computer that we're utilizing on a daily basis to create the drawings that will ultimately go into the project. So, so yeah, what Lisa's referencing is, in a lot of our staff meetings, a staff member says, you know, "That floor plan looks great, but I don't understand what that means." So we're able to kinda pretty quickly, I see that as it's booting up here, pretty quickly then kinda give them a little bit different view or perspective of what they're looking at versus just trying to have them envision what a floor plan looks like. So again, we start out a lot of our discussions with the boring floor plan, and then they say, "I don't understand what that is." And we have a couple different views that we kinda look at then to kinda help them see and understand the building. And this is kinda similar, a little, similar to the view I showed earlier, but a little more crude and rudimentary. We haven't cleaned this one, this version up yet, and we're going slow yet.
Wow, it's a little bit of a sight, so interesting with the teachers coming in in the different groups, the custodians and such. Like the ELL department came in, and they had their own graph paper with their own design, and it really transformed what their area's gonna look like. And the location where they are is centrally located, because they serve kids K-12, so that was really neat that they took the time, because if you went across the hall in their space, it's awful. And so they really came up with this location and a whole set design out those slates and thought that, through how they should have that. And same with speech and our physical therapist, their area, they lack windows, but they were okay with that because of what they do with their kids at that time.
Well, that's loading up. Again, we have a pretty good schedule that we've worked through, again, working with our partners from Myron. This is kinda just our design schedule overall for the project. So again, kinda moving through, the color coding is kind of our, some of the terminology we use from schematic design to design to development to construction documents. But all along the way, we're kinda trying to have milestone dates where we're producing drawings for check sets for both the owner and then occasionally for check sets for budgeting purposes, to make sure we're doing well from a budget perspective. And then in terms of kinda the overall schedule, again, Myron has a really kinda detailed, and this is multiple pages, but again, this is, this takes us again, all the way from the start of November, so again, this is all of our design things all the way through. So we're, I think, kinda right, basically right here where the yellow dot is. All the way through again, till we bid, and they, we do the bidding, they sculpt the bids and so forth. Sorry, I'm very-
That's all right, you're doing great.
And then again, all the way through the construction of the project, as we stated, within the building, again, getting to our, basically again, to our August of 2021 timeframe.
And again, today, we've been on schedule, so we're tracking very well.
Oh, this is just great. So anyway, yeah, well, I guess technology's not being our friend right now, but again, we're able to kinda manipulate the model and show them the different spaces that we're looking at. I think it's very beneficial to them to kinda just see things a little bit in a little more realistic point of view.
Are there some other questions, Park?
I have a question. When you're going through the bid process, are you gonna try to use local people?
Absolutely, yeah. So during the bidding process, we'll engage everybody in the district, we'll engage the board and anybody else to see which contractors can be qualified to bid, and definitely we wanna use any local suppliers, local subcontractors for this project.
Do you have, like, requirements out of the construction company? So we have requirements that our members need, do you have requirements?
Yeah, they'll be part of the specification book, so mainly it has to do a lot with insurance to make sure, the insurance that the district requires, we have, we pass along to the subcontractors and they have it as well, so that'll be part of the bid package. We will issue the plans to bid, and then also have like a pre-bid for contractors and suppliers to come to the building, see what they're gonna do, look at the plans and ask any questions.
Myron's also very good about trying to be accommodating, again, like, let's just take paint, painting's usually the, a good example, because there might be, there's a lot of local painters, maybe they can't do the entire building. Myron's willing to work with them to try to break pieces of that off or a certain phase of it off, so that they might have an opportunity to do a particular section of a job as far as they can accommodate.
Right, yeah. So we'll work, again, with the district to find out what the contractors are out here and then to tailor that as well. So the biggest part, once we get closer to December, to January, when the documents are getting close to getting out, then we'll start engaging and getting that good list of subcontractors and make sure they're on the invite list.
Based on the timeline, because the question I get asked often is, when are they breaking ground? So what is, what is your guesstimate as to when the first shovel will hit the ground?
Yeah, right now it's like March, I think that's where we're trying to pin. We could always try to go a little earlier, but again, with the weather, we're in Wisconsin, we're, we're gonna be fighting frost, and that's something that we wanna avoid, we don't wanna try to put the bad money into the ground. Let's get a good spring and start then. So right now, we're technically showing March.
We're also kinda just bears noting, we're bidding, we think at a great time to bid. Again, this is a long project, this is a good project for contractors to bid, so even from that perspective, it's good, but bidding in that December, January timeframe should get really good numbers.
Just out of holidays, they gotta pay their Christmas bills, so you don't wanna do more work, so yeah, that's gonna be a good time period to bid, or right into, good time to sculpt, get it set, and then break ground.
How long are you having them hold their price for?
So if it's bid in February, it's typically 30 to 60 days.
And if they're awarded the job, then do you hold them to that price?
Absolutely, yep. So contracts are locked in for the duration of the project, so that's part of it. Again, we don't want to have language where they could change their price in three months, we understand, and usually the contractors understand and they know how the market works, so they'll set their price and it's locked in for the duration of the project. That's for the security of the district and our reference dollars.
Is the bathroom still trying to load?
Yeah.
Lowering is gonna be-
Yeah, and this time, we do CFA, CFA C members that are present, please come over.
You don't have a water?
Because the official semester pioneer's coffee mug.
Oh, there is coffee mug.
The just so, because it was so- Oh, the questions are good though, I think that would actually my benefit. Yeah, so the question was about special ed, I think we met with them on three or four occasions. They were the, it wasn't mentioned earlier, but they were the lone group that came with a PowerPoint to our meeting, so that was awesome. Again, I, I might be lumping things that maybe Myron always thought it was special ed for everyone, but just to kinda point them out. Again, that ELL room that Kyle was mentioning earlier is located here, so again, it has adjacency to the elementary as well as the middle school, high school. We have a large special ed suite up here, so there's a large room with, you know, cabinetry with access to water. There's kind of a couple different ideas, there's a couple different zones within here, kinda for a work area, for kinda more of a quiet gathering area. Then we also have a sensory room off of that, which will have space for trampoline, a swing, treadmill within that space as well. Just outside that, there's also a conference room for the second floor. On the first floor, on the first floor, again, just kinda going through all the different spaces, again, OTPT's located up here, speech here, early childhood, again, with a dedicated toilet to storage within it. There's a life skills room here, this is kinda a unique room, so that is set up, it has a number of different functions, it has a kitchen within it, it has kind of a dining, living type space within it. I think there's also the idea that there'll be a spot for a bed, so it's to try to teach some, some of the students, some of the just basic life skills type environment. There's a bathroom and a shower within that space, then a washer and dryer within that as well. We have a title, Title I room here, which will share, again, another small group instruction room with, that will be shared with the library as well as a book room. Other spaces, Kyle, these are the specialized, that's- We also have a specialized designated room within the existing building for middle school. The high school rooms kinda remain within that, on the off and main corridor of the existing high school.
That's the library, are there two separate libraries?
Yep, we'll still have the high school library, which is located over here, and then there'll be the elementary library.
Okay, thank you, good.
One thing I, that I think is neat, and you asked about square footage, so when Kyle says all the staff is coming in, there's been a lot of discussion, because if you look at a drawing, a lot of people recognize what that means, but a lot of the discussions that were brought up were like, go out and tape it out in your carpet, like even storage rooms, go, you know, mark it out on a floor, stand in it, and then I think the staff has been very helpful and this team has been very helpful for them to get a real picture of what those little boxes on that screen mean, like to your question, what's that mean to me, right? So that's part of the question, I remember one of the special ed teachers was like, map it out for all your devices that you need and stuff like that. So there's been a lot of work going on, that's why it takes time to break ground on a building the size.
Well, and a lot of the teachers will ask how big their new room is, and then the next question they ask is, "How big is my current room?", because they don't even know the dimensions, they just know what space they live in, and so-
And so architects are very good about pulling up the old drawings, saying, well, here's your current space, and they go, oh, okay, now on third floor, we have a couple really extremely large classrooms, but the majority of the teachers are getting more space than they had in the past. So it's, it's been a good process.
The learning stairs. Is there going to be a spot where if there's a gathering there, if there's a screen that can come down, if they can do a presentation or some kind of a smart board or a dry erase board or a retractable screen?
We haven't discussed that yet, that's, that's a good idea, that the problem is always all the technology behind it. The location that it's at right now, probably there's, there's not a great solution for it, but I think that's a great point, something we can ask the staff if, if there's some unneed for it. Again, I think within the building, there's a lot of other spots to sort of satisfy that need for technology, against specifically the multipurpose room, that, that idea is that it's going to have a lot of accessibility to technology as well as the library. So I think it's a great idea to try to find a way to do it, but I, there's going to be some challenges with that.
Yeah, just so you know, we had two days where different groups of staff went, each toured three different schools, and then just last week, Rock and a couple of his custodians and I went to, where did you know?
Pulaski.
Pulaski, and we checked out a lot of different flooring. It was very beneficial because their one building is 20 years old, so we didn't want to see flooring that was six months or 18 months old, we wanted to see it after it'd been in for a while. And that was really beneficial for us, and it also helped with their school closures, black and red, so we could see how they incorporated into the floor and black being such a dark color, didn't overbear because they mixed gray in with it, it was, we learned a lot.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the staff room, okay? Is it being outfitted with tables and chairs and, yes, refrigerator, microwave, sink? Is there a window in it?
Yes, there's two of them actually, there's one on the first floor and one on the second floor.
So it's, it's two levels?
No, there's just two of them.
Two.
There's, there's a smaller one on the second floor and then a larger one on the first floor.
How small are we talking then, how large?
I'm going to guesstimate, I'm not able to measure at the moment.
But we're not talking closets or anything?
No, the one on the second floor, I'm guessing is about 20 by 20.
Uh huh.
And the one on the first floor is probably pretty close to 20 by 30.
And both of those will be outfitted with the stuff or just with them or?
Yep, yeah.
Are they dedicated for, ones for elementary and ones for?
No, those are, those are actually both in the elementary addition, so I, I think all staff are open to use it. I don't know if we've had that discussion.
I think people just migrate to the one that's closest to the area. Right now, we have one on the first floor, second floor, maybe a nail, well, that kind of sort of break room, and the third floor is where the elementary goes to eat right now. And most of our teachers in the high school area are eating groups in different locations, but they're all rooms most of the time. But there is a lot, teachers while they're on the corner of the ramp.
Well, here's a chance to really make them feel comfortable when they're gathering, you know?
They're pretty excited about this.
I know, so I'm just saying, think of it as good as you can. Windows, music, popcorn machines, all that stuff, they sound dumb. I've seen it boost staff morale a lot, and people will go in there for those reasons. So I just hope that we don't just have this wonderful school just for students because you have to have happy teachers as well. And so that's why I keep asking these little questions, because they should be late after it's all done.
Sure.
So the windows are a big deal too, is there any access to outside from them, like a courtyard, you can't really figure out, can we get out or?
So I mean, from here, they could go, they could go out this way or they could go out back over towards the north.
Okay.
We don't have anything directly out.
No, I don't think you'd want that, but if it was in a courtyard, any of those areas, sometimes that's nice too, but just wondering. And then my other one was, smart boards, are they all over the school comp? Do you have lots of smart boards?
Mm-hmm. And each new room's going to have one as well.
There, okay, awesome, thank you. Thanks for letting me wonder here.
I don't know if any room doesn't have a smart board. Maybe they can, only a lot of them.
We've got smart boards in even classrooms that aren't classrooms anymore.
Cool.
And we've got a few smart boards that honestly have, we should have replaced probably about a year or so ago, but they're in the old section, so we're just kind of waiting for the new building to bring in new technology.
Awesome, thank you.
Are the 3D photos the last part of your presentation?
And the schedule?
And the schedule? Maybe you're trying, all you're making for that, maybe go with the schedule and then walk and see. Is he a little older?
I think where we're going is, should we let you tinker with technology? Sure, we can go on with some other stuff. If you get it up on Ronin and then we're going to...
Tell us. Okay. And then we are to guest comments.
Okay, before we have guest comments, I have a statement that's been endorsed by Attorney Tom Haldren, who represents Ms. Lisa Blythe, rather accept the layoff necessary by declining enrollment in the district. Ms. Blythe decided to retire, she requests that the school district manager request to be on family leave at the end of the remainder of the school year. He's anchored for many years of service for the district, he asks of respect Ms. Blythe's wishes and privacy.
Okay, so Lori Serb, wishes to speak.
Good evening, I'm Lori Serb, I'm president of Sturgeon Bay Door County PFLAG, it's an official chapter of PFLAG National. My pronouns are she, her and hers. I am here to support Saga becoming a school sanctioned club. Sexuality and gender alliances help students develop their own individual identities, a sense of one's own self and value as a human being, self-worth. Sexuality and gender alliances help human beings relate to human beings collectively, humanity, and humanity is every person on earth collectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Taylor Johnson?
I've decided not to speak.
Okay. There's, there are any others, thank you. Does anyone have items that they would like to inherit from the consent agenda? If there aren't, the consent agenda is approved by consent for the lengthy list of donations. John Corbin donated $5,000 for Destination Imagination. Door County Community Foundation donation of $5,000 for the Eco Lab. The Sevastopol Education Foundation, 750 for Destination Imagination. The Glidden Drive Association, $510 for Fifth Grade Trees of Tomorrow. Jim and Gerald Zeig.
These group?
Trees for tomorrow, no, no. The Zeigs donated $5,000 for Destination Imagination. The Breakfast Brewery Club donated $750 for the music department. There is an anonymous donation of $500 for the athletic department and $500 for the music department. The Raybrook Foundation gave grants for Eco Lab rejuvenation, Destination Imagination and the Fifth Grade of Trees, Trees for tomorrow field trip. Calvers donated $1,121.41 for elementary sports. And State Farm Insurance donated $500 for Destination Imagination. Thank you very much to all of those individuals and groups. We'll move on then to administrators' reports. Administrator, have you anything you'd like to highlight outside your report?
It's included in the report, but one of the things I'd like to highlight is just the end of the school year, it was an excellent end of the year, a lot of kudos to the students and the staff, especially for putting together the field day that we held. It was very successful, really kept the students engaged throughout the week, they were excited. It was a really nice end of the year as well, just by having all of the kids participate. They all had different activities that they could be a part of and felt valued as a part of that. So it really was a smooth end of the year, and checking out with the teachers, a number of them had mentioned just how it didn't feel like it ended the year. It really kind of rolled into it and all of a sudden, before you knew it, it was, it was there. So kudos to them for putting all that stuff together, they did a really nice job.
Okay, and Mr. Bear and Mrs. Mark Rep are not here tonight, on a little vacation, but we got their reports. And we're ready.
Yes, thank you. Yes, so right now, just, we're just writing again. So again, this, this is sort of similar to that other view that you guys saw earlier, but again, we're able to kind of manipulate, manipulate the view and kind of take a different, oh gosh, nice way up, take a little bit different look and view at things as we're looking at these different areas. And again, it's just really, I think, beneficial to the staff to kind of see and understand the different spaces that we're, that we're looking at and considering. And, you know, as far as like the science classrooms, again, we're showing sink locations, we're showing where the little bottleers on the wall where the, the vent will be, the, the chemical vents, so again, as far as kind of start to really visualize and understand their spaces, this is a really powerful tool for them to, to kind of see, see the space and, you know, it's something a lot more than just a 2D drawing. Again, this is that kind of representation of a little bit taller tech ed area than where a future second floor could potentially be here. I tried to open the first floor, I'll give it a try, but let's see, oh gosh, this one got really changed, so someone's, someone's been playing in the model, so. But again, that, that common space, again, kind of a, again, a unique view here if I kind of rotate and look down, but again, from the second floor plan, there'll, there'll be some open space, so you'd be able to kind of sit up here and look down into the, to the lower level and to where the multipurpose. Part of that again is because their intent is there's a skylight above there so that we're getting natural light down into that multipurpose room. And then again, this is that opening then for the, the learning stair over on the, off of those, those science classrooms. So you kind of spin around and sort of see that. As we go through and Kyle and the group kind of asked our last meeting, are we ever going to see like a walkthrough or experience that? And we'll start to integrate that into it as well. One of the challenges with that obviously is we have to kind of get all the materials and everything part of that, so those first few images that we presented, one of the keys again is that idea of concept, concept, concept. Do, do we like the idea, do we think this looks good? And then we kind of take that and carry it through the rest of the building.
Are there more members in your questions? Or are we great or my number representative? Otherwise, thank you very much for coming tonight. Superintendent, do you have?
I just want to report that the staff survey was completed in May and so was the class of 2018's survey, both done by school perception, they will either give us that information for the July or August for me, I get to settle, so they do it off-site, you know, remotely, so it costs us a little less, but we'll see if it'll be the deal, I have it two presented at the same time. And then yesterday was my last day of the FBI advisory council because I lost the election in my office.
You're in a different district now, right?
No, it didn't matter, no, no, I was a loser. I lost the whole job.
It builds character.
WASB is still represented, it won't be killed, but it will be my compu from Dodgeville.
Good.
Oh, anything else, Mr. McGee?
Nothing else, I'm sitting here.
The court planning team has been meeting, as Ray said, every other week. Anything else that we could, we should add here for board members other than?
Well, the only thing I'm going to say is, she's, she stepped up for a minute, she's asked a lot of questions, looking over the staff, and I don't think this can be said enough, that this staff has put a lot of time in, and the two gentlemen that just left up, listen, I thought very well, and I don't believe there was large disagreements. I mean, they came up with good ideas, someone or me was always asking to make sure it was in the budget, but the staff really helped guide what that's starting to look like. I just know that, if you think from a customer's perspective, they've had a lot of say, so it's not, not, you know, three people in a room making that turn out. I think the key is there's been a lot of staff at every level, you know, the maintenance guys have been involved in maintenance, storage areas and stuff like that and access, and we've had a lot of discussion on good maintenance access, and that's what you want. And I think everyone, that, that is a very big success to me at this point. We've got a lot of work yet, but the staff members that have been coming in and supporting those meetings have put in extra time, and everyone should know that they've gone above and beyond in my mind to really make sure we have a school that's going to last and be very successful to all the staff members and the kids. So I think that's a good story.
And speaking of extra time, I would really like to give a shout out to Rock, Rock and Rock because he has gone the extra mile with all of the information to his regular duties. And I know a lot of people have really stepped up, but I think Rock has done just a tremendous job.
His, his knowledge base of what's here is incredible.
Yep.
And valuable. Communications Committee?
We met, I mean, the last full week of school, kind of mapping out the summer, because it's hard to, to plan meetings in the summer, but we have one coming up on July 15th to get ready for the upcoming edition of the May Year Times and the story announcements out before we lost everybody to summer vacation. And that's been, the core of that last meeting was the upcoming May Year Times. We talked about a few things, like you said, the banners and things like that that are coming in the future for the gymnasium update. But other than that, we're just always plugging ahead.
I don't think we've reported it, and it was a really fun month, and it was really fun to go through all of the award ceremonies and graduation and Sunday's carnival, it was great to see everybody. Anything on the budget, Mr. McGee?
Budget for food service, we transferred, we plan on transferring $75,000 from the general fund to food service, and we still need our maid and whatever meals we had in June to claim yet, so it looks like that transfer will be less than that. And the Fun 27 Special Ed transfer from Fun 10 also should be less than, we have a couple claims from, that's we have to have come in first before we know our final ones. Carly, want to add anything else?
No, we got just the other 46, but we'll be to that.
Right, right now, you're sitting on two regular payrolls and the summer months for the teachers, which come off of this, the, July, August payrolls for the teachers are on this year's budget, so Carl's got a little work to do last week in gym.
Anything on facilities?
The gym cafeteria are torn apart, and like Sue said, Brock's been working a lot. We came in on a Sunday with electrician to have the conduit run for the gyms with the new lighting. The bleachers have been removed, the last day of school, they were ripping out the ceiling tiles in the cafeteria to get that ready to build, so we're moving forward with that. The, before we put up the basketball hoops in the new, in the 65 gym, we have to have a structural engineer sign off to say that it's possible and rock and brim and on the structural engineer for that, just basically a sign off on that. The basketball hoops that were taken down in the 65 part are the square glass ones, they are usable in, with our brackets in the 91 gym. And the bleachers may cause us a problem because that's the last thing to go in, and they won't get those until we get the other steps of our project done first. Right now, we're looking for that structural engineer to sign off so we get the hoops up and then everything else done. So we'll put their emotion, that's two big projects, and Rock's had a hard time getting a bid on either moving the shed out back or building a new shed to replace it because that shed is 40 years old and the Senate work part is the major cause, the other current group needs attention, so he's having difficulty, he's having people come up with a bid, but he's working every day at it, so.
Did you have anything legislatively so outside of your written report?
Yes, I do. There's a lot going on legislatively right now, particularly with the budget, which is a moving target. There was to, and I have confirmed this, that it did take place, but there was going to be a march to Madison today, particularly organized by the Wisconsin Public School Network. Next week, the assembly in the Senate will be looking at the budget now that it has come out of Joint Finance Committee. According to the Legislative Fiscal Bureau in a memo that they released this week, Sevastopol should see an increase in funding for 1920 of $125,452. For 2021, $294,107. For a biennial total of $419,000. For a biennial total of $419,559. I wouldn't take that to the bank just yet, but that is what was projected by the Legislative Fiscal Bureau. This is the sum of the revenue limit adjustment, the categorical aid, and the special ed increases. The special ed increases will not nearly as much as we wanted, or as Governor Evers had projected, but they are better than what we currently have. This increase does not include mental health, which we are still waiting on our grant to hopefully get that funded. It does not include high-cost transportation either. So we are kind of in a holding pattern until next week, but it is at least somewhat optimistic. There are some things that were tossed out of the budget, and that was the poverty factor, which Governor Evers had wanted to include, which would have helped us as well. Also tossed out was the proposal to freeze the enrollment in the state's private voucher system. So those are some of the current updates, and next week we will see more. And I would just like to commend one of our grandparents from the district, I'm not with him, he was interested in approaching legislators with some of his thoughts, and he did that, he did a remarkable letter, we spent some time going over everything, and I'm really pleased because I think this is who our legislators need to hear from, rather than just hearing from us who are in the education business. And I would hope maybe the next biennial, we could get about 10 more people like this gentleman who did such an admirable job for us this time. So that is all I need to report for now.
Then we will run to old business, and we have the second reading of some policies. These policies work in force. Last month or the month before, board members have had them ahead of time so they could look at them, look at any changes. So at this time, I'll look for motions to approve the second reading of 3122 and 4122.
I would move to approve the second reading of policies 3122 and 4122, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunities.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Second reading of policy 3139.
Who do approve second reading of policy 3139, staff discipline? Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Motion for the second reading.
Move to approve policy 31, second reading of policy 3140, termination, non-renewal and resignation.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Policy 5111.
Move to approve policy 5111, second reading eligibility of resident, non-resident students.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. 5113. I'll make a motion to approve policy 5113, open enrollment program in your district.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Policy 5114.
Move to approve policy 511, second reading of policy 5114, non-immigrant students and visitor program.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Policy 5341. I'll make a motion to approve policy 5341, second reading emergency medical authorization.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Policy 5512.
Move to approve second reading, policy 5512, use of tobacco by students.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Policy 5517.
Move to approve policy 5517, second reading of student anti-harassment.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And then we have a second reading to delete a policy E5724, high school voter registration program. Is there a motion on that? I'll make a motion for the second reading of the, of the policy 5724, high school voter registration program.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have a, a second reading of a new policy, 2430, district sponsored clubs and activities.
Move to approve new policy, second reading, 2430, district sponsored clubs and activities.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Then under new business, we have, we heard from Mr. Phillips at his robotics club last month, and they're looking for approval to look at.
I'll move to approve the robotics club proposal.
Second. Discussion?
The one thing I wouldn't like discussing, which, or just to clarify that stipend, these stipend names, we gotta get our hands around, so I'd like to maybe make it known that there's no stipend with this yet.
I asked Mr. Phillips about it, he said he wasn't interested in what, who wants with the club up and running, but I did know a year or two from now, there may be someone else, or he will say, yeah, but a lot of time after this, and they thought that, but at that point, he was wanting the club approved, so I did ask him about that, but.
So what I'm saying is, I think we can approve the club, I like approving the club, I think that's a good idea. But I think the other bigger, larger pending thing that we keep talking about is, and we already established, so we need job descriptions or descriptions of his role. If he doesn't want to get paid, I don't care about it. I mean, I appreciate that he's doing the, but when they start asking for money to be stipended and this keeps growing, it should roll into the larger thing, so it should go into that process. So we're not approving the stipend here, we're approving the club at the school.
That's the proposal, right. But it's also...
If it's not related, I'm okay with that.
Well, no, it is related, but it's also difficult because the robotics club, in a couple of years, may look different than it looks right now. When he's just first started, because he has listed competitions that they'd like to accomplish, to get to, so the first couple of years will be more like work of developing the club, and then hopefully it'll build a success and more proud and more expense that way, but, so if you're approving the club, I guess if you've got more questions about it, maybe we need framed better by him exactly what you're looking for.
If that, if Mr. Phillips takes that club, or if he can take it, they'll go to a world competition, which will be like Destination Imagination, and they think we have to have a conversation upfront, how's that going to be funded? Is the school going to be funding that? Or is that similar to Destination Imagination where there's a lot of fundraising that goes on? Partially funded by the school, but by the donations, and I know you see there's a lot of fundraising that goes on.
But I think what you're saying, David, and I appreciate that, is that if we're going to have an advisor that would technically receive a stipend, that we at least get that rated out, and we can have a note in the file that says he refuses it or declines it at this time, just so we raise some consistency in terms of the stipend distribution, I guess, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I think, I'd like to approve the program, I think that's good. But I just wanted to make it known to anybody who's listening that, and specifically to me and the rest of the folks. Mr. Phillips, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, Mr. Phillips' recommendation that stipend's not been approved right now, that I wanted to make that clearer for expectations. And then it, there's, there's another avenue in the process that down the road it gets bigger and he wants to get a stipend, then he'll have to follow that process.
Or someone else takes it.
Or somebody. Is that, is that reasonable? That's, because I kind of like to get the program rolling, I think that's a good idea, personally, I mean.
A lot of times, does that have to, doesn't that depend on, we've talked about other clubs' participation, you know, whether we, that we may be rejected because we didn't feel there would be enough participation.
Right, that's kind of, you know, it looks really popular, but maybe in a couple of years, you know, might change or something.
Not, not necessarily, not, not necessarily specific to robotics, but specific to any, any clubs.
Right.
And we've talked about this in the second meeting, we need to get to a point where for the protection of the school district, for the protection of the employee who's running the club, and the benefit of the students, what's the purpose of the club? And what are the schools' minimum expectations for that? Now, it might change over time as clubs grow, but if we have a kind of a job description for people to start with, when they go into it, they know. And if we have any stipend changes this year, we should look at those job descriptions before the stipends change in September, so the people going into it can know what's their expectation. Is the expectation what the old advisor did, or, you're not saying the statement changed, but an advisor changed, an advisor changed, yep.
Well, for the protection of the employee, you should pay him the stipend if they want to donate it back, you know, donate it back at their choice, that's how you should do it. But he didn't put a stipend in his proposal, so I, I don't know how many hours he spent on this, it's hard to give a dollar and all for a stipend when he didn't initiate it either, so that's a difficult part. And I think he's blind to get it going, he's passionate about it, and the stipend's secondary, and it's, sometimes it's half lunch period, sometimes it's after school, so he doesn't have it framed to tell you how many hours he's spending on this.
So Ken, would it be reasonable for us to approve the club, approve the, approve the club with a stipulation that over the course of the next six months or so, I mean, a job, for lack of a better word, a job description is developed with Mr. Phillips, the current advisor, that sets out the expectations?
So you want that made next year when he's settled?
Some, well, I don't know if it'll be next year.
They'll give us a time, because then it's, then he has a deadline, he knows when he's gonna get it.
I think it'll take him a year to really see what's going on.
And I bet year two is different than year one, like that's a whole different program.
And then that's when the supervisor, whoever, if it's the principal supervising this, sits down to evaluate the advisor, they talk about changes that might occur in their activity over the next year.
See, I, I agree with that, you know, I'm picking at something that's not on the agenda, so I think we need a rubric for all these stipends. And I need to know from a school perspective, which ones bring value to the school, the community, which ones should be paid, which ones shouldn't be paid. That's what I'm kind of itching at. I think this approach will do it. We've been talking stipends for a while, we've made lots of progress.
And maybe that's another, that's a future Jedi.
Well, our compensation committee maybe needs to be done that again, because it's hard. Because I asked everybody that does a stipend, because what do you do? And I get a laundry list, and then how do you weigh this compared to that, the number of students?
That might be the best step.
It was easier when I negotiated.
You can have a list and a lot of stuff like that.
Like that, but this still has to be done, so.
So we've got a motion. Carol, would you read the motion as it stands right now?
Motion by Mr. Zion with a second amendment to approve the robotics club proposal.
So you want to let that motion stand as it is, or do you want to add an amendment to it as to developing the job description?
Yeah, I think we approve that, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have the, I'm not sure if they want to be called Saga or S A G A. The Saga Club proposal.
I would move to approve that proposal.
Second. Questions or discussion?
And this would fall under the same, blah, blah, blah discussion, so I think we approve it, but the stipend discussion comes down the road.
Right, it's, it's just like robotics, they're, they're probably, they're a club up and running, but it's gonna develop over time as well, it's a program, it's gonna be, it's not all the same five years, it doesn't have no problems, because it's a new program.
Okay, any other, any other motion, second. Any other discussion?
Can I just make a comment? I just want to, one more time, acknowledge the students that came to our presentation. That was an amazing presentation and took amazing courage and bravery, and I just, I, I'm still in awe about that presentation. I, that was just done excellent. And something has resonated with me since your presentation, and that was your comments around bullying. And tonight you heard at our board meeting, we approved an anti-arrestment, anti-bullying policy. I would just really encourage Saga to use that as their platform, as one of the first things to do is to meet with your advisor, review that policy, and use that to champion the work that you intend to do.
So one, was one of the other ones missing, right?
Yeah, one's missing, right.
Yeah, okay. So all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Then we have the resignation of Mrs. Simcox, a high school science teacher, who has a job closer to her home. Is there a motion to accept her resignation?
I would move to accept the resignation of Erin Simcox, who's based on her service to the district.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Are you still some departmentally challenged or?
Physics and chemistry, not destiny, I don't know. It's posted till tomorrow, and, and with today, the class will be at three candidates.
Three?
Not, do you, well, yes, but there's, I think there's more openings across the state than three, so.
I'm sure.
It's just, it's, that guy's another one.
It's an applicant.
Yeah, it's, and she's going to middle point, which is, the team does for her parents' houses, where she's still taught. Yeah. She's going.
And then we have the resignation of Jason Margrap as the high school boys varsity baseball coach.
I'll move to approve the resignation of Jason Margrap, boys' bat, varsity baseball coach.
Second. Questions? Questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have the retirement of the supply elementary teacher.
Move to accept the retirement of the supply elementary teacher. Second.
Questions or discussion?
I will just say that I'm very saddened by this situation, and after hearing all the parents and grandparents and others who have spoken about this, I, I find it very troubling. I will support the motion because that is what Mrs. Bly has requested, and I'm very troubled by it.
I will second that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have fund transfers for Fund 46 and 73.
I'll plug with 73 first. We're in the status of Fund 73 beyond that, our most recent actual evaluation, our employee benefit trust agreement, we have any amendments to that, and a legal opinion, and board approval, so probably have to work on the actual evaluation and the employee benefit trust agreement, and then we have to have a legal opinion, so we'll be back at this next year, not now, for Fund 73. And that is the fund for retirement benefits and selection.
No action?
No action on that 73, but we're gonna keep working on that one. And Fund 46 is the building tenure maintenance, a green, a plan, which can be adjusted at any time, and Fund 46 was established four years ago, so it has one year to go until you can actually utilize those funds, we have a thousand dollars in that fund currently. The, does it matter when you put the rest of the money in there? You cannot take anything out of that fund until June 30th of 2020. So with our fund balance where it's at, Carl and I looked at the numbers, and we'd like to wait till next week, but we'd like to have a motion to transfer up to $500,000 in the Fund 46, because as Rock and I were going with the budget and the projects around here, the air handler, the base school additions, $125,000 estimate, and that's gonna have to be handled because that's not part of the building project. The doorway going up to 91 gym is about $50,000. The bleachers on the football field and the 91 gym building inspection, and so what I'm saying is, by the time July 1st of 2020 gets here, we will be able to utilize those funds for my building's honor tenure maintenance list. And our little point in the year for our fund balance is around 3 million, so we could afford, compel it considerably, about $500,000 put into Fund 46. So we could afford, complicate it considerably, about $500,000 put into Fund Forty-Six. And then through ADM, earn some interest on that money for a year. And then start using it next July.
We were looking at putting it in ADM. A, because if we put it in, nickel A, they only guarantee or they only insure up to $200,000. So you're half of it, you're not going to be insured. And B, with ADM, they're going to get you a much higher return on your money. I mean, with $500,003, you're looking at probably a good $10,000, $15,000 in interest, building on what we already have through ADM. And they're more than willing to take additional accounts or, you know, additional, yeah, additional accounts. And no way to charge, you know? They're just, you know, more happy to have our money. And they've been doing very well with what we have so far there. I think last month we gained $22,000 of interest. Just on what we have, you know, what we have there now.
Carol, does that motion carry for this? Will we get it correct?
Yes, I have authorized the administration to transfer $500,000 from Fund Ten to Fund Forty-Six for future projects and tenure maintenance plan.
So, second. Did you need that to say up to, like you said, or does it transfer $500,000?
I think it would really come from $500,000.
Any other questions or discussion on that transfer? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
With another caveat to that, the reason why we want to wait till next week is I'll have all the payrolls done. So we'll kind of know where our numbers are at for the end of the year, a better estimate after I do the four teacher payrolls and that last regular payroll. When the lower numbers are at $500,000, it should not be a problem.
Then we have some administrative recommendations for changes to the employee handbook.
Yeah. First one is currently the secretaries are allowed to use unpaid time off when students aren't present. But I'd like them to not be allowed to use unpaid time off when it's in-service days. Because that's what we're just establishing here. And they rely on the services of our secretaries. They still can take any other vacation if they want to, first one day. But I'd like them present for all of these services here.
Yes, we can take those one at a time. Any questions or discussion on those on that item? Those three P? So what you're saying is they can take it, but they have to prove a vacation day. And not barred from not being, okay.
Right. Well, we're allowing during non-student days right now to take unpaid day. But a non-student day would be an in-service day. And I'd like our staff here on the service if possible, to have to use a vacation day. Okay, we're vacationing, so we'll use unpaid on that day.
We should probably have a separate motion on which one is.
Yeah, I think each one's a different.
Carol, you have a motion written on that one?
Motion to approve employee handbook change on not allowing unpaid time off for secretaries on in-service days.
So a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. To eliminate the domestic partner language in regard to insurance.
Our insurance coverage doesn't allow domestic partners. So our handbook's in conflict with what we're allowed to offer. So, yeah, so we'd like to match it up.
Has there ever been discussion about that?
No, it's just now state law that domestic partners are not toward that insurance. So.
And that waited to effect April of eighteen. And so there was a number of, not a probable, four staff members that had to take their domestic partners off of their insurance because it's no longer, no longer allowed according to state law.
There a motion written on that?
Yeah. Motion to approve employee handbook change eliminating any clauses referring to domestic partners in regards to insurance coverage.
So, second on that? Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have personal days for teachers and aides.
Teachers and aides have two personal days per year. I want to keep it at two. But I'd like them to only allow use one during the month of May because that's our busy season with substitutes and wrap up the school year. And if they can use one, a lot of times teachers will hang on to them, aides will hang on to them. And then all of a sudden May comes in, so I still got two personal days. And they'll be using them both. And then we're, it's a hard comeback. So it'd be nice if we could spread it out a little bit this school year.
Carol?
Do we want to make that specific to, in the wording for teachers and aides?
Yeah, because that's where we have a hard time with substitutes.
Okay. I mean, everybody else is, we don't need substitutes.
We don't, yes, well, we do in the kitchen, but that's.
Right. So, let's see.
But it's aides in the kitchen, that's where we're having problems with.
Okay. Motion to approve employee handbook change eliminating use of only one personal day in the month of May for teachers and aides.
Second.
Okay. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. And then we have teacher work hours for the nineteen, twenty school year.
I have here from 7:30 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday. And then Friday, 7:30 to 3:30. We have the adjustment this after-school break here. And I'm good with 3:30 on Friday. By the time the bus has rolled out and it's almost their stone building to cover. So I think we're good.
So we have a motion to approve employee handbook change of teacher work hours from nineteen for 2019, 2020, 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Monday, Monday through Thursday, and 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. on Friday.
So.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Carol, how does this get translated to the staff? How these employee handbook changes, we just.
Oh, you know, it's, well, it'll be tomorrow, probably Monday. Because I'll take tomorrow off. But then in-service, the following, overall changes is what is happening.
When we, one of the in-service days in August, we have a, now there's a presentation. And we go over to all the changes to the employee handbook. Everybody gets their employee handbook and they have to sign off that says that they have read it. Whether or not they read it or not, that's up to them. But they have a sheet that they have to sign to say they have read it. And that's an annual, yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Then we have four requests from support staff for changes to their employee handbook.
I met with the support staff and compensation committee twice. And these are requests they have, they want to bring forward to the board. The first one is holiday pay. They made their first choice of the New Year's Eve Day as a paid holiday. And the second one is Labor Day. I believe back in the day, Labor Day was paid for, it is paid for year-round. Employees were not for school year employees currently. Because the Friday before Labor Day, they don't work. In the past, I don't know how many years ago it was, they were working that Friday and they got them Monday off. And now their services are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, with the long weekends. So they don't get the Labor Day. I think you have to look at all these items together because they're all related to compensation. And so, like the other ones that I recommended, work compensation related to all these have a price tag that comes with them. So I think I want to explain each one to you so you will understand what a concept they're coming from. So that's one, A and B. Number two is sick day payout. They're requesting language they added to payout. They have $50 per day for maximum 100 days for any support staff employed five years or older upon leaving the district. This is in regards, because the teachers can't have four years of insurance upon leaving. And that fourth year, their sick days are hooked towards the fourth year of insurance. The support staff is eligible for three years of insurance. And it's at a later age.
Well, right now, the way it's, for support staff, you have to work until you're age sixty-two.
Sixty-two, correct.
You get three years of insurance, like the teachers do. You have the fourth year, but when you get to the fourth year, you're on Medicare. So it doesn't benefit, that proposal doesn't benefit the support staff.
And their paragraph is different than the teacher's. The teacher's was offered four years and they can start taking it at age fifty-seven. So that's the difference in that. Item three from place hired after July 1st, 2019, change the following step system. Right now, when someone works, if they're here eighteen months, they're at the same pay rate as someone who's been here ten, twelve, eighteen, twenty years. And the support staff is looking for a little bit more distance between that. So that the person who's been here eighteen months isn't at the same rate as someone who's been here eighteen years. This change would go into effect for a place hired after July 1st. Because anyone who's been hired up till today has been looking for that raise in six months and eighteen months. And so we have different categories. Step one is the same as current, which was approved last month. And step three is the same as the new step four. Because we were talking about adding the fourth step and adding money to it. If you added money, that costs dollars to the district. So we worked on step one and step four being the same as step one and step three. We divided the difference to make steps two and three. So it takes you four steps to get to the highest level, which is thirty-six months. And that gives someone the moment, six months, eighteen months, and thirty-six months. And then we go to step number four, longevity pay. Based on the number of years of service you here have here in June, you would, if you've been here five to nine years, receive a $300 stipend. Ten to fourteen years, $400. Fifteen to nineteen, $500. Twenty-plus years, $600. And that'd be per year, based on how many years you've been employed. Because the veterans are looking to, give them space out and be rewarded for their time in service to the district compared to someone who's been here three years or whatnot. So it's all kind of tied together. Then also, there'd be, it'd be paid in June, which is the conclusion of the school year. The district where this was borrowed from, they did theirs in December. We had a discussion about that, so we wanted to finish out the year, so we talked about June. Year-round employees are receiving an additional personal day because we talked about the stipends here of $300 to $600. A school-year employee would work nine months to get that stipend. Whereas someone who was year-round would be twelve. So the support staff looked at this, add a personal day to balance that out a little bit. But I look at all these and each one comes with dollars attached to it. So I think, I don't know, the compensation committee's got to look at it as a package.
Just so I understand, so like number four, that longevity pay is a one-time payment per year?
One time, every year.
And it's that number times the number of years of service they have?
If you're here five to nine years, you receive $300. If you're here ten to fourteen years, you receive $400.
$300 per year.
$300 per year. Now, so your fifth year, you get $300.
Right.
Sixth year, you get $300. Your seventh year, you're getting $300.
So every year, you're getting paid this one hundred.
That number right there.
Right.
And all them are subject to taxes. Because it's like income. It's like, it goes right through the paper. But all, like, and Kyle said on that, with the, the wording on them is a little different with the eighteen months, you know, six, eighteen, those are months. So like you said, with like an aide who works nine months, it's going to take them four years to get to that thirty-six month. Because those three years, they don't work, they don't get credit. Okay? For months worked. So it's going to take them four years to get to that thirty-six month timeframe. Where somebody who works year-round, it's going to take them three years to get to that thirty-six months. That's what I'm saying on that.
But just see how they're all tied together because they're all financial, so.
But also, there's a cross-selling adjustment increase.
Last monthly, last monthly increase rate is like 2.44%.
Do you think, it's kind of a meeting subject. And I'm not going one way or the other on it. But do you think the board should have a separate meeting on this to kind of look at how it all ties together and the fiscal, the impact?
Well, how this is all coming about is because you set negotiations. Now, we don't have it. So we have compensation or meet and confer. And we still have personnel committee, which is in order as the whole negotiations, which is Dave and Lisa. And the finances, order the whole. So this may have to go to one of those groups to take a look at.
I would like to see the fiscal impact.
Yes.
Move it together.
Right.
Because, you know, if Carol gets to crunch, give us, I mean, you know, based on our current staff, just so we can kind of get an idea of the fiscal impact. Based on these numbers, you know, these longevity's and these payouts and things like that. Like, you know, if we're projecting, how many people are going to be doing this payout in the five, ten years and all that.
Because we are talking about a group of forty-two people.
Right. Oh, yeah, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I think we need to see the numbers.
No, I really don't. The numbers, as far as the four-tiered scale, as far as pay increases, definitely there is no real impact on that because it's, action's going to be kind of savings.
It's more one, two, and four on this list than so much three. But I think we would still want to withhold on three till we talk about four.
Because they're connected, right?
Right, necessarily.
Right.
So does someone want to make a, if you want to make a motion to table this for a future meeting? Or? I'll make a motion and.
No, no. I think it should go to the committee. And I don't know which committee you want, if you have personnel, finance, and negotiations.
Well, I think the finance committee is the board, is the board of the whole.
We all want to be in on that.
Okay, then I would think. I would think all of us would want to be in.
Yeah, so I think it should go to the finance committee.
Okay, that's us.
So can someone make that?
I'll make a motion to table the support staff requests for changes to the employee handbook until the finance committee, which is the board, is able to meet.
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have the compliance requirement for learning permission teacher requirements. Would you want to frame that up, Mr. Murphy?
Sure. As we move forward here with offering dual-credit courses, our teachers have to have a degree one higher than what the students are earning cred for. So if they're, the cred's going to be at an undergraduate level, the teachers have to have a graduate-level degree. Our teachers, kind of like we got the reading specialist license. We had ten of them go through UW-Oshkosh. That was a little cleaner because they were all going to the same program and all had to take the same steps. When it comes to the higher learning, some of our teachers are farther along in their program than others. Others haven't started at all. And which university or college to go to will vary. And then there's interesting facts, like NWTC, if a teacher's teaching a dual-credit course, that teacher receives nothing from NWTC for teaching their class. But if they're teaching a dual-credit course from UW-Oshkosh, they receive $650 from UW-Oshkosh each semester. So there's got to be some fairness there. And I'm teaching for UW-Oshkosh, I get $650 each semester. You get nothing. And yet, we're both in dual-credit. So we want our teachers to go get their degrees in higher ed so that we can offer these courses for our high schoolers. But then we also want them to be able to come and stick with us for a while so we get that return on our rates. That's why I want over a five-year plan of zero percent, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred, if they left us and we paid for it. But it's not as simple as just going to one college or university. There's multiple programs out there. And the private ones do cost more, but they are quicker sometimes in getting down to work. Sometimes it's the only choice. Like a Dan Sandborg, he doesn't have a whole lot of choices where he can go. Other ones for English or social studies, maybe you have a couple of different options. So that's why I pardon there about approved program by the district. So at least we know what we're spending our money on.
And this is approving tuition, not books?
Tuition.
Okay.
I think it should, I think I'm understanding and it makes sense. But we need to put a limit on paying in full. And what I've seen is something like, we would pay up to the lowest-approved program that would qualify for this thing. Because my point is, well, that's how the other government agencies are set up that way. So you can go to a local community, a local college, that's maybe our state college. Or you go to USC in California. Or you go to Harvard, right? Harvard's cool, but it's going to cost heck a lot of money. So I would not recommend that we pay in full. Some wants to go to Harvard, some long-distance remote. Because nowadays, you get business learning. learning from anywhere. That's how I finished my masters, at USC, through a distance learning program, which costs a lot more money than a lot of other programs. So that's, so right now, we don't see that, but I think we need to count that as, if this is what they need to teach this class, look up for some good accredited school that would qualify that, and then we could establish a value. And then if they want to go to a private school or their school of choice, that's okay, but they pay the difference. And to all military, this, this education is that way. Because if not, if we're paying in full, we'll go and look at the high school, because then I got it on my resume, and in the short five years, I'm going to work somewhere else with a big thing on my resume. So I think that either is a further discussion or we stand in here. Does that make, first of all, does it make sense?
Yeah, I think so. It's, we're just trying to think of all the places where these folks are talking about, trying to go, and, because it's also the timing, because we have to have this in place by twenty twenty-two. And so if you're in a master's program starting here this summer of nineteen, and I got to get done by twenty twenty-two, I want to make sure our staff has the flexibility to get what they need to.
And if it started somewhere, you want them to finish there, not have to go back and start all over.
Like you said, like if a Sandmore had a very limited.
Yeah.
Places.
You got to limit this expense to school. I'm sorry, folks.
Right, I, I agree.
There's a lot, have we paid attention to college costs recently?
But there may be some exceptions.
Then, then they can come and will have an exception. But I'm betting money those schools, these limited schools, those are good state schools. I mean, what program is he doing that he can't find? I mean, what, I mean, so his unique school, I'm sure it's not the most expensive school, is my point.
No, but there's a probably a choice if you're, if for a state school, you're like UW Stout, so what, located here in Door County, that's not convenient, you know what I mean? That's a long way away.
Probably distance learning.
Yeah, and so those items might not be able to do distance learning in every course. But, so, so how would you frame it, Dave?
Because if you could also word it something, unless it would cause a hardship kind of situation, I mean, it's like, you know, how do you, then you have to define hardship, right? Because if Stout offers it, who else does? I mean, is there a private school that offers it?
Yeah, if you had a camera, the one he had.
So, 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 because Stout is far away, so where's the private school located?
Can't remember, I think it was Milwaukee.
So is he going to drive to Milwaukee, or is he going to?
Yeah, sometimes he may, yeah.
I mean, because those are, because.
It might be MFAE, you know?
And then do we also pay, um, travel expenses?
We were only talking tuition, we're not talking about travel. That's all we had discussion.
And just on application.
I just don't know how we can approve it this way. So I mean, um, we, uh, we, um, so determine, so we can find a, without causing hardship, find a school that offers the program and schedule. Because I, I agree, if you're halfway through a pro, because by the way, if you're halfway through a program, hasn't even paid for it by himself or anybody?
Well, he can't, he hasn't, but they're waiting.
Right, so if he's already paying for it by himself, he's going, it's going to help him. He's already winning because we're paying him some instead of none.
You're saying this is kind of a timeline issue?
Uh, but we're not taking away their opportunity, I'm just saying, I'm trying to limit the cost expense to a school. We just approve a policy. I guarantee someone's going to come up with a pretty sweet program, a pretty sweet college.
Can you say what you thought it should be?
Yes.
Let's, let's start with this.
Yeah, where the, how you.
Say what you thought it should be, and then we'll, we'll start there.
So I think we'll have their tuition paid. Add a value equal or lesser to, um.
University of Wisconsin campus?
A, a state school, um, campus. Or, or.
University of Wisconsin. Time to go to a state.
University of Wisconsin campus.
Because right, state schools would be the least expensive in the area.
Right.
And it's a state-funded school, that's great. And if there's some unique circumstance.
Do we give an opportunity in there, if there is that unique circumstance, that it comes to who? To the, to Mr. Lukey, to the administration, to the board for a variance?
Well, I would recommend the board with recommendation by the superintendent. That means. And, and again, just like everything else may change, if we find this is terrible wording, I'll be the first to make the move with the change it. But I just, sorry, Mike.
It's a good net, when you're.
Yeah, no, it's a, we said, it wasn't as clean as the, everyone go to UW Oshkosh for your reading specialist license.
No, right.
Much more complex.
And upstate schools, because they have different prices and.
Unless they're going to have to stick with us to get it paid.
And that I liked, it's five years.
And they have that with the reading specialist license, too.
Yeah.
In regards to that, how, how is that, like, I guess recruit, like if somebody were to go to college and we paid for it, and they leave within two years, and they have to pay back sixty percent of the cost? Do they write us a check? Do we withhold their, I mean, sixty percent of tuition?
Right.
I mean, we're talking, we're not talking.
Right, if they notice us today that they're leaving, they find out, they pay a roll to cover it in.
And if they don't.
That's eighty percent. And you pursue it, right?
Pursue collection or means.
Well, I think what we would do is they would actually sign, sometime, they would sign.
Isn't that what they did with the reading?
I'm just wondering how they, I mean, I work in business, I'm just saying, that's a large chunk of change. To recoup that is not always as easy as.
Well, and what you may have to do is you may have to do, legally, you would have to get some kind of garnishment.
Yeah, I mean, do we want to look into that, right? That, I'll tell you what, that's military, that's.
I mean, I would say, that's a pretty good deal, and I mean, I, I mean, we're, those numbers based on that, I mean, that can be, I don't know if there's a paycheck going to cover that, I guess.
It wouldn't be a paycheck.
Well, a paycheck, a paycheck is not going to cover that, but the thing of it is, if they're leaving for, to go to, say, go to another school, good chances they're going, they're leaving for more money.
Yeah.
Could we have maybe just wrapped up some kind of legal jargon on the bottom of the his contract in terms of the payment plan, in any event that you revoke or.
You authorize garnishment.
You're ending the deal, and this is what.
And then, then we have legal standing in the event that this would happen, the more the chances of it happening.
But we had this happen once twelve years ago, and the superintendent hunted it down.
But didn't, didn't we have some kind of agreement with when we set up their reading program or something like that?
Yeah.
That, you know, if they left in a certain period, they had to.
The legal terms, I know, a guy had a full ride at Marquette, four years, graduated, got out of military, had to pay it all back. But he did it because he didn't want to get out, he was mended on money and all the like.
Are you a motion pen now?
I do have a motion. It says, "Motion to approve district paying for tuition at a value equal to or lesser to a UW system college, where teachers pursuing necessary credit to be eligible to teach dual-credit courses as required by Higher Learning Commission, HLC, provided the program is pre-approved by district. Also requiring the teacher to maintain a C or better grade in each course, where teacher is responsible for that course tuition. Teacher will also be required to repay a percentage of tuition if teacher leaves district within five years of completing courses, percentage based on scale present."
Someone like to move?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion on that item? Do I need to put anything in verbiage in regards to, unless, you know, there's a hardship situation as far as distance or, was it, I didn't get to add it to it?
I didn't want anything like that in there.
I didn't know, I mean, we were just talking about that.
I, well, I think at that point, they would move forward and say, hey, this is the only program I can find, or, we'll have to give it a time for that.
You give the process a chance.
Other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, then we have approval of the nineteen-twenty WIAA membership. Which it looks like we don't get charged anything.
No, it's a nonprofit organization, and they have a profit right now, so they're, they waived dues since.
Really?
Since two thousand fifteen.
So, I, we have to belong to them, I, we have to belong to them. What do we get, what do we get from that? When I went to, down to WIAA, we got all those banner things, like every year, there's a booklet of all of the football regulations, all the basketball, do we automatically get those?
Yeah, our, the, our coaches take the tests, so they, that was sort of like, and then we get to participate, their, their tournament serves, uh, series for every sport you want to be a member.
I'm moving for our WIAA membership.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty CESE seven contract, is there a motion for that?
Approve of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty CESE contract?
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
One thing on that, um, talking to Mrs. Margraf, that she fully intends to taking much, making much more use of this contract with CESE seven, especially with her special aid department and having them come up and give presentations throughout here utilizing it much more than what we have in the past.
Meaning it would cost you more money?
It would not cost, no, it's just part, it's, it's part of the contract and utilizing the days that is in the contract much more than, much more than what we have.
This here, Diane, I can use some of the ELA textbook review and the ELL department used in theirs, but Melissa's saying she wants to use this as her special aid.
Okay, because I was, okay, so my follow-up, but your answer is, are we fully using this contract and anything we're paying for, it's still the right thing to do, and there's a recommendation to get this?
Right.
You wouldn't have brought it in otherwise.
Yeah.
Good question. Questions, further questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have the first reading of some policies, board members, they receive these policies ahead of time, so they can read them, lots of reading, and pose any questions. So at this time, we'll look for a motion on the first reading of policy sixty-one fifty.
I'll make a motion to approve policy sixty-one fifty, first reading tuition income.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Six-two-two-zero.
Move to approve policy six-two-two-zero, first reading budget preparation. Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy six-two-three-five.
I think motion to approve first reading of policy six-two-three-five unveiled.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Six-four-four-zero. I'll make a motion to approve policy, first reading of six-four-four-zero, cooperative purchasing.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy six-five-two-zero.
Move to approve policy six-five-two-zero, first reading, capable reductions. Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy eight-three-three-zero.
Move to approve policy eight-three-three-zero, student records. First read.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy nine-one-three-zero.
Move to approve policy nine-one-three-zero, public requests, suggestions, or complaints, first reading.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy nine-one-five-zero.
Make motion to approve first reading of policy nine-one-five-zero, school decision.
A second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have the first reading of the new policy six-six-zero-five crowdfunding.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of policy six-six-zero-five crowdfunding.
Okay.
Questions or discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Why do we, what's the problem with crowdfunding? I mean, there is an option to, I was just, what was the backstory on it? Why is it a bad thing? And my only point is, in funding, in education, if we can get money some way and it's approved and vetted through a good cause, like we do now for fundraising, this crowdfunding does work, uh, for certain little thing. Is there a history behind a legal history, or, or legally, they recommend not doing it? I'm just curious why someone recommending not to do it, or is there a can of worms? I don't understand.
I don't know if it's a can of worms or not, it's just, would be, when would you do it, when wouldn't you do it, you know? And then coffee hit the people off.
And I think we try to limit our fundraising as much as we can, because there is so much of it that goes on as it is. And it, it would require certainly approval by Kyle.
So, right, so theoretically, and I'm looking more than the next six months. Our current funding program, which, fundraising programs tap our current community, and that's a discussion we keep having.
Right.
Crowdfunding theoretically could go out beyond this community. Crowdfunding is internet-based.
It's internationalized.
Right, and so if some family takes a liking to Pioneer Girls Basketball, and they want to support the sports program, they can do that. So the only reason I wanted to have the discussion is, I think you're right, it has to be controlled, and what we would do, all our fund, fundraising, we already vetted that way. I'm just saying, maybe this is a technology that we consider. Now, if the average school is funding its own, what can I add? I just wanted to ask the question, because, well, it's the first reading, so I wanted to.
I think it's a question where, I think it's a question where, depending between now and next meeting, you can do a little research just to see, what, are there schools out there that are doing it?
And what's the response?
Success or response?
Well, success, I mean, is it?
Well, it's on the downside, because you know, if something, because most likely what this would play out, right, so what I suspect is, some group would want to do it. So they would do the labor, not our, not our advent team or our staff. Someone would set it up, manage it, close it down, and report off the financial gain for that group.
And take the first step off.
Crowdfunding doesn't take them a cut.
Well, so, the, the, okay, I got you. But not the person, the person wouldn't take a cut.
No, the company would.
The company, that's just a tool available.
Right. And that's no different than.
No, it's not.
Well, this is, but I'm recommending so, right?
When you go to.
DPI.
DPI recommends this, so there has to be some reasoning behind that.
Well, when DPI, well, there's this option here. What, does DPI recommend the policy?
Neola.
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 Because DPI's policy does have an option that you can approve it.
Neola's policy, yes.
That's, we have read, crossed out, yes. Now, break, break, discussion. If nobody else has the same feeling, I'm with the numbers, and go ahead.
I, I understand where you're going, because I mean, it is, it's a fairly used platform for, for doing those kind of things, and, yeah.
Because it's no different than Renard's Pizza. The, the parent organizing that doesn't get a cut, but Renard's Pizza's making money off of Renard's Pizza.
Sure, our pulmer's nice pulmer.
So when we just are using crowdfunding, they get a cut.
Right.
I could, financially, they're good to say, they get a cut because we're using their So when we just are using crowdfunding, they get a cut. I could, financially, you're very good to say, they get a cut because we're using their tool to bring money. Just like you're using Renard's cheese, bacon, cheese curd pizza with sauce.
So at least you get.
Get the cheese.
You get, you get something.
All right.
If you look at the thing, I mean, we did have a lot of donations come in without.
That's what I'm saying, if somebody has a liking to basketball, basketball, as you referenced, I mean, they can find over to send a check and make sure this is who people find.
Well, that's sort of what, you know, what the athletic clubs do.
Right.
They have SEF.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea or not, I'm just saying that. Well, here's, can SEF do that? So SEF right now uses Facebook to raise money. People have done it for the SEF.
Really?
That's a school.
Okay, that's a question, so the SEF is not officially part of the school, so they can film that. That's, okay, that means.
It wasn't their help.
That was, that's what prompted it, actually, because we've done that. So we're not gonna limit them from anyone, we just don't want our local community groups, our school groups.
Our staff.
Our teachers.
Correct, because there has an issue with that pass, where you go down on their own without school approval.
Right, right. Thank you, I'm, I'm satisfied. Do you guys have? Because I think there's a motion on the table.
There's a motion to approve the policy. And again, this is the first reading, so if someone wants to do additional research before the second reading, we have time to do that.
That's good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have a proposal to move the July school board meeting to July 11.
I'm going on vacation on the 18th.
And I will be here on the 11th.
I will be here on the 11th either.
Okay.
I make plans based on the 18th, so. Can we find a date that works for everybody?
Four.
What about?
Yeah, right.
Can we have me?
A lot of people hear that. Well.
What about the 25th?
I'm going to the Dallas, I'm the 18th, I'm almost at the.
My anniversary, please.
I'm going out west, yeah.
Northwest.
Yeah.
What is, what are we projecting as a tour, what are we projecting for agenda? And my point is, as long as we can have a forum, we can have a meeting.
It's nice to have everybody.
It's nice to have, I fully agree. So what's your schedule look like?
I could go any date in July, Monday through Thursday, except for the 10th and the 11th.
Okay.
I am on the 10th to the 15th. I could do the eve, I guess.
What about the 17th? Oh, you're.
I'll be going out there. How about the 16th?
I could do the six, I will be back on Monday.
16 to the Tuesday.
I could do Tuesday to 16.
You got something.
That works.
She already, or she gonna be gone? I'll go on the 17th, we'll try, that's okay.
No, 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 no.
Well, we don't want to.
We have a good vacation.
I don't think we should move people's vacation, anyone's vacation or travel.
Well, Monday the 15th. Monday the 15th?
I will be back.
I will.
I don't bother. Karen, are you here Monday the 15th?
I'm on.
I'm on. What about Wednesday the 10th? Was that not good for somebody?
That's a good for.
Wednesday tonight.
Monday early.
The night.
Tonight?
Monday the 9th?
Tuesday.
Tuesday the 9th?
That gives you, that's two weeks to, and I said, I could be here for another meeting, do we have, I could do Tuesday.
Yeah, I want.
Well, it's only two days earlier.
I got to talk to school receptions about if the 9th in July or August.
Well, that'd be in August if they can do it.
9th is only two days earlier than the 11th. I could do the 9th, I had to.
Nice work for everybody.
Okay, is there a motion to move that school, the, this July school board meeting?
So no.
Second.
Charles, can you read what we're reading?
Motion to approve, motion to move moving July school board meeting to July 9, 2019. And who was the, who did the motion?
Sue.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That?
Little discussion. The question is, with the finance committee, do we want to have that? Do you just wanna have that part of the meeting on the night?
Yes.
Based on the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do I do this?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
They're gonna be number 40 by then.
Oh, you can do anything.
I was full on signing.
Yeah, you put together.
Is there urgency to have that done before August, before September?
Only sorry, wanted to have that part of here. Oh, fine.
Yeah, because we want to work part of the.
Budget.
Well, not so much the budget part, but also the employee handbook.
Employee handbook, and we have new teachers on the 15th, and we usually go to handbook, have them as they start, and then the in-service is the 27th.
Of August?
Well, I, as a data point, the last time we approved the, the biggest sports staff staff, it was late in the retroactivity year, just because of the processing timeline and everything else going on. So I mean, but we can get it done if you can get the numbers.
I'm sure Carl would rather get the numbers done than do retroactive, whatever you can do.
Well, I think it did. So we're looking at, you need, you need numbers for sick days, and you need numbers for.
Longevity.
For longevity and.
And.
And how much a day pays for our support staff if you have the holiday.
So really, none of those items are really gonna change, be a retroactive issue?
No.
Because the pay scale thing, it's just.
Right.
Kind of spreading it out, and the other items would aren't retroactive. Well, so if you give that, we can, we will.
Right, we might give it in to the, to the, um. Well, yeah, to the employee handbook before we start.
Okay. We voted on that, right?
Yes.
We, and that concludes our regular business for the evening, and we will convene to executive sess, can I have a motion, we convene to executive session?
Someone?
Second.
Cindy, roll call.
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
I'm.
Aye.
Hi, Nick.
Aye.
Motion carried at 9:14 PM. Back in open session at 10:46 PM.
Sorry, 9:46.
9:46 PM. Okay, on the FMLA request, can I have a motion for the Heaven Fly request?
I make a motion to approve the FMLA, FMLP request on Heaven Fly.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. When you're ready, Karen.
Yep.
Mindy Vanderhook?
I'm moving to approve the request of Mindy Vanderhook for FMLA.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then Kyle Schleis.
Move to approve the FMLA request of Kyle Schleis.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
When you're ready for us to move on, Karen, you know, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Then Michelle Jordan.
Move to approve Michelle Jordan as the high school special ed halftime, point three FTE at-risk teacher.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Girls' high school basketball coaches.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Ben Rico as the varsity basketball coach.
Second.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Beth Rico.
I make a motion to approve Beth Rico as the assistant high school basketball, girl basketball coach.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, do you want Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Boys' high school basketball coaches.
Move to approve Jason Berry as the head boys' basketball coach.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Rob Holman.
Move to approve Rob Holman as an assistant boys' high school basketball coach, sorry.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Steve Baman.
I'll make a motion to approve Steve Baman as assistant basketball coach, boys.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Roxanne Shop.
Move to approve Roxanne Shop as the assistant JV volleyball coach.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then Dan Judas.
Make a motion to approve Dan Judas as the high school assistant football coach.
Second.
Questions or discussion? And not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, then we have our regular school board meeting scheduled for.
Tuesday, July 9.
Tuesday, July 9.
And our finance group is up, who is also that, I think, correct?
Yeah.
At 7:00 PM.
We want to.
We have to do this earlier.
Meeting time.
Do you want the finance to be a separate committee meeting, but then?
You just do it before the regular meeting.
Yeah. You know, you're like, you set your time here.
Finance is close to shaping.
You know what I mean?
Well, you say the regular meeting starts immediately after.
Afterwards? Okay.
At you, at, at an estimated time.
Okay.
Want to start by six? Can you hold?
I can't keep, I don't know if I can hear that.
That really?
I can find that maybe, so I don't know. I mean, I can change it.
So you want seven?
I mean, I can hear it at 6:30.
6:30? Well, do it 6:30 then, okay.
Yeah, sure. Well, and we know that, we know the regular meeting.
We've been good for a while, but we haven't.
Say, say the regular meeting starts immediately after or at 7:30 or something.
Approximately.
Approximately 7:30.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried at 9:50 PM.